Meet your skill of one of the final boss from Persona 2.
What, Gathlywell?
No, Wheel of Fortune.
Ah.
Yup. But it does something different.
Wheel! Oh, Fortune!
It does something different. It would uh prevent all foes from changing their uh personas for eight turns. Because everyone in that game could change their personas.
Yup. The old days. Also, it really says something that you said like, this is the ability of the final boss of Persona 2 and I'm like, which one? Hitler?
Uh, no. Faceless God.
Yeah, the other one. God, how weird is this series that I can just bring up Hitler and it's like, yeah, that's a thing that fucking happens?
Hmm.
Uh, anyway, greetings wanna know? Sorry. Hello, hi and welcome back buddies. I am ZonDrus and here to meet ourselves is Snowpiedman.
Oh.
It's time for more Persona 3 Reload.
Oh. Yeah, baby!
Shenryah.
He who eats well is strong.
As opposed to me, who just gets fat.
I don't think I have any right to say anything about that.
Oh yeah, you're like a fucking twig, aren't you?
I am a twig. My twig is a three quart size and I think it's bigger than I am.
Paper Seltos. Paper Seltos.
Is that a joke on like Flat Stanley or something? I don't know.
Flat Stanley? What?
That was something that was uh from when I was in school. Elementary school specifically.
Ah.
No, I don't think you ever, I don't think you ever told me about that.
Tell me more.
How would that come up in a normal, how would that come up in a normal conversation?
I don't know.
It doesn't.
He's going through some tough times.
Me did go through some tough times.
He's going through some hard times.
Hard times? Yeah, that's why I said that.
Okay, real talk, do the fucking gig at chat.
Yeah? Hmm.
He's a super Chad. Super Chad. Mega.
He seems like the, I'll be honest, he's the type of person I would always uh if they were to invite me to go with them to like dinner or something, I'd go.
Good skate, just the guy I needed to talk to.
That's something I need.
Gag glasses?
Did he give us gag glasses?
Oh no! Pressing, oh.
Uh.
Well, good news, I think I know someone who's going to appreciate these.
Oh boy. You know, I can see why he was going to use them and I can see why he just gave them to us because they're not gonna be used anymore.
Yeah.
Oh Pi, what the fuck do you mean?
There you go.
Hmm. The last post.
Let me see this. Sixty-nine?
What do you mean?
I'm not gonna lie, I love these memes just taking the piss out of how excessive and overly detailed human models are these days. Like.
I feel it, the problem is, the problem isn't that they're overly detailed, the problem is that that's the entire focus.
Yup. Definitely perfect. Alright, brace yourselves guys.
Uh-oh. Elizabeth.
Give Elizabeth the gag glasses. Someone left my message.
No! It's those damn things again! I haven't seen that shit since Persona. Oh.
Always a sight for sore eyes.
Oh. I'll never get tired of that.
Thank you Elizabeth, you look great with them. Worth.
I was hoping she was gonna give us back the uh gag glasses as a reward.
Me too, I was kinda hoping they'd be an outfit choice. I would stick those on Akihiko in a fucking heartbeat.
Kidding? I tried to put those on Koromor.
Sure. I don't, I don't think he'd be able to, honestly.
That's the joke, he'd just be hanging there on his nose.
He just balances them like a good dog. Alright, it's the middle of the night. I know I said this once at the beginning of the game, but god, this place looks so fucking good at night. So pretty. And definitely step up from the original.
Honestly, I wish the mall nearby me looked like this.
Uh, why was I here? I think that was it, actually. Okay, I like that, actually, do we have something that I want? Here's our academics. Courage, muscles. Security side. Don't sell stuff. It's on TV, nothing interesting on the news. Cool. Pet the dog.
I'm not on TV, so there's nothing, nothing good on TV.
The dog has been pet.
Alright, it's like, okay nah, nah he feel good, now he can go out. Just remember, when times get, times get tough, pet dog.
When times get tough, pet Pupper. Life's cold and hard, Pupper's soft and warm.
He's not here at the moment.
Nope, he is not here right now. God damn it.
If the dog tries to bite your hand, boy, are you in trouble.
Certain from cash.
Does this get us charm? Yup.
Yeah, it gets us, it gets us the two things we don't need.
Is it, it's charming courage?
Yup. Like I said, the two things we don't need, but it also gets us some money.
Yay. Not like you're loaded or anything.
Uh, not anymore, really. He's bought the fucking top stat thing for you, Kari.
I don't need. No such thing as max plus.
Max plus. What would that even do?
Oh. Max plus? I don't know. What would that do?
Ah, yes.
Emergency.
Emergency!
Emergency.
Sure, why not? Fuck it. I can't do much else. Somebody's crying right now.
Can we, he be, like?
Yeah, he is from GeckoCon, he should be studying too. He technically, you know, just like outside the school though. Your blasphemy.
What do you mean? If you're paper thin, I'm nothing but a sand grain.
No you're not.
Can I count how many sand grains you're?
Hamkatsu.
Count how many sand, count how many sand grain is on this person.
One, two, three, four, five, six.
You've gone, you've gone too high already, it was just one.
One? Haha, reference.
Jeez.
After all, I already made that joke. I already made the world ends with you joke. Okay, here's a question, have either of you actually played that game?
What?
Uh, the world ends with you.
No.
Which is actually pretty good. Although, if you play the Switch version, definitely play it in um handheld mode. Cause you, you can definitely tell it's DS roots. I've tried playing it with the Joy-Con, it is fucking infuriating. That sub sequence is managing okay?
Hi. Uh-oh. Oh.
They're ordering a hit on a high schooler.
Nah.
That's fucked up.
Hmm.
Hi.
Yeah, you know, this is kind of coming at the worst possible time.
You know what, we do need smarts. Study session! Right.
Uh, the...
Let's study together. It marches on without a care in the world. Boy, I know the fucking feeling.
Yeah, I know that feeling too. Be my study buddy.
Oh, this music.
Uh-oh. I'd agree with you, if I could see the fucking problem.
Wow.
Yeah, sorry.
Two of them are taking their studies seriously. I should try to focus as well.
Never.
Never.
I mean, I slept through my pre-calculus class.
Are we going with him? I'm sure that's all he needs.
Uh, study.
I'll read a book. You know what, make it a manga, I'd believe that. I'll do a short workout.
This for tonight.
Fair. Everybody to the limit, everybody to the limit, everybody come on for Hugugod!
Most of the time. How many is a few?
Subtle tension in the air.
I wonder why. It's, it's, it's blacked out, you can't see.
I actually wished that had been the max rank for us.
Right.
Did you think we didn't notice?
No, it's that I really needed the help. What makes, why gave you that idea? No, I'm just really bad at math, please help. Why would you bring that up? I'll be faster than a speeding bullet.
Such a overrated. God damn it.
Float like a bee, sting like a butterfly, wait, no, that's not how that goes. No.
Run like a chokebow, sting, stab like a Tonberry.
I don't know that one. Let's ride, let's ride, Chokebow Country, let's ride! Tomorrow.
It's something Yuffie says in uh Seven Rebirth.
Ah, well, I've never played Seven, so that probably is a good idea.
Do you know who Yuffie is?
No.
Never mind then.
Something you should really, something you and. Having never played Seven. You and her have something in common. We both, they both have Baka Syndrome. Who? Yuffie. You get along with her just fine. Okay.
Someone make a fucking VR mod for this game?
Which game?
This one. I'm looking at, I'm looking at the meme channel again.
I wish there were certain VRs for uh this game for certain reasons. Hello police. That's what I wish, I wanna VR, I wanna give myself a VR.
Either that or someone made a first-person mod.
Or someone just modeled that for some reason.
Yeah, I can see that extracting the models, putting it in Blender or something.
I just have the resort to friggin YouTube 3D crap.
YouTube 3D crap.
There's certain 3D things that are good.
Not that common.
Cause they're gonna start next Tuesday, so please just don't put us back in that alchemy class or whatever that fucking shit is. Please, let, let, let's not talk about that.
Alchemy class.
Alchemy. I don't know what it is.
Stay awake, I need, I need the smarts, I need the SMRTs.
We're so close. Imagine, imagine that you'll level up right here. Well, we still have probably study sessions we could do at night too.
Probably.
There's no way we're not gonna be ranked six by the time we get to the exam.
Well, one of the great things about when we get around to five, is like I said, that's gonna be probably a new game plus run, so we'll be able to focus on just like the social links stuff. Or I'm sorry, the content.
Not about that.
It's social links.
Ah, damn it.
Not yet.
It's a little more in-depth social links.
Yup. It's, it's social links with bonuses.
Yeah, which I like.
Ah, Starman.
You coming? Not yet. Oh Pi.
Didn't realize you swung that way.
No. No.
Maybe it's just me. I guess. So let's get some Paco Yakky.
I'm, I'm thinking about it. He would get along with Akihiko.
Oh, probably. In fact, you know what, I guarantee if he was also in the boxing club, those two would absolutely be rivals.
Oh yeah. This is just replacement Shinji.
Replacement Shinji.
No. It would be like two Akihikos stepping into a ring with each other.
Oh, that'd be a hell of a match, actually.
Hell of a match? You kidding? I gotta, I gotta tear this fucking. I'm pretty certain the arena wouldn't last. I gotta tear that arena down.
It'd be like fucking Hajime no Ippo in there. It's a fucking boxing anime. Megalo Box, that's what I was thinking.
Yeah, that's what I was thinking too. I, I thought it was like literal two boxes just boxing.
Oh, like the fucking.
Welcome back to World Championship Boxing!
I've only ever seen like one episode of Megalo Box, but I hear good things about the first season.
Oh, the first season is great.
That would be amazing.
It's been a while since I've seen it, but it, I really loved it.
Yeah, it's like, yeah, it's like the old uh 90's cowboy beef off aesthetic. Listen buddy, I know exactly where it comes from. To our dads. Come by.
Hmm. I don't understand that feeling.
Sounds like you still have yours.
Yeah.
Lucky bastard.
God damn.
Got fucking Saitama energy in that.
I didn't think about it.
The sale's on my show!
Next thing you know, we're, next thing we know, we're gonna get to level 10 with him and he's gonna show up bald.
Ah, Yukari.
And suddenly he will lose the ability of killing any mosquitoes that he encounters.
Yeah, study session. It's the second years.
More music.
Amen, brother.
Mm-hmm. I don't think I can. Wait, we, we're the one who called it. God damn it, oh, that didn't mean. Uh, what?
Shitposting.
Oh, the image?
Yup. Cause Jio actually does cameo in Four. And that's, that's her portrait.
It's simple, you raise your muscles in your cheekbones, it's a little up. Put on your happy face. This is my happy face.
This is my happy face. Work it out together. I was so tempted to go with your up, Junpei.
It's seven.
Yay!
I was right.
Damn it!
No! It's not a, yeah, god damn it!
Would've been great.
Still not, still no, still no for Mitsuru, yeah?
Nope.
Our friend's second year. We need to be a true nerdig to have her. Put up for Gara.
Ah, god damn it!
Wow.
No!
Why? Alright, buckle up everyone, we're in for this ride.
Buckle up buckaroos!
Motherfucker.
Tetragrammaton. Hey, I know that word.
Being happy fitting to society. Oh god. So what bullshit do we want to talk about this time?
I'm not sure, either of you guys got anything?
Nope.
Oh, that is super cute though.
Ah. So do you wanna know about the time I went swimming with gators?
Sure, go for it.
Uh, so, every year, I would go camping with a couple of friends I had from band. And there's this river there. Where apparently a lot of gators like to sit, like one year there was uh, I think we counted about, I wanna say thirty gators?
Jeez, that's a lot of fucking gators.
Trust me, I know, I was in, I was in the canoe with one, with them. They weren't in the canoe with me, I was in a canoe and we happened to be going by them and I saw eight of them all dive into the water at the same time as I'm going by them. Lovely.
I mean.
You say that until you see the uh, what is it, the twelve foot long one currently sitting on the beach, panning.
As gators are wont to do because they are cold-blooded.
The same twelve foot long one that decided it wanted to eat a bird that was still flying.
What, did it jump up and grab it?
Yeah.
Oh my god! That bird did not stand a fucking chance.
No, but in, in the story originally, uh, what was happening was uh, I was in a little kayak on my own, my friends were in the canoe. Um, and it started raining on us while we're in this river. There's still a bunch of gators around, but I didn't wanna get my canoe or my kayak full of water and then be stranded there with a bunch of gators, so I wanted to get back as possible. My friends started racing me back. I kept pushing it cause I wanted to beat them back. Lost control of the kayak, ended up in front of the canoe, they T-boned my kayak with the canoe. The whole thing rolled over. So now I'm rolling in the water, the whole kayak sinking into the water now. Um, with me still in it. I lose my glasses.
Oh no.
Into the said ri, same ri, river. I reach up, grabbed the canoe, almost pulling them in with me. Um, only for them to stop, I finally stopped rolling the water. And then, still sitting half, mostly submerged, like up to my waist in the, in the kayak. Then dragged myself, my friends like dragged me in the kayak to the edge of the river with the canoe, where I climbed out blind as a bat. I never found those glasses, cause we never wanted to go back and looking for them, cause that's a river that has a bunch of glitters in it. So, as a joke for this,
Oh no.
In my group chat with my friends, we changed my profile picture to a gator wearing sunglasses.
The Duke Nukem of gators.
Yeah, it was funny, cause this is the second time I've lost my glasses into a river.
God damn.
Uh, like, not quite the same thing. Um, there's a theme park, not nearby, but, we went to a theme park once, that had like a water ride, like a very simple, just go up, go around, just splash it out kinda thing, you know?
Yeah.
I lost my glasses there once when I was younger.
Huh. I lost my glasses once when I was fishing, uh.
Thing is, that was at the start of the day, so I was wandering around the park the whole day without my fucking glasses.
Oh, both the times I lost my glasses in rivers, I was beginning of the day, basically.
Oh fun.
Um, the worst part was when I lost it in that river, we had gone out there to go camping, I didn't have a spare set of glasses and I didn't have ability of getting any, any quickly at all.
Yikes.
So, I went two days without glasses. I can't drive without my glasses, so when I got, when I was being brought back to my car, we had to stop at a, like, random parking lot, so my brother could bring me my glasses. So I could then go drive home.
Wow.
The funniest thing about all this is, uh, in both circumstances, I lost my glasses in rivers. Through some of the stupidest means possible. Cause the first time I lost them, uh, it was a fishing competition. And I, just to tell you how good at fishing I am, I caught a duck. Like, I threw the fishing, uh, uh, the fishing, uh, line out. And I didn't catch water, I didn't catch a fish, I caught the side of the river. And then we're trying to rea- and then we're trying to reel it in, caught the wooden dock sitting there.
That's crazy.
And to this day, me and my brother still argue over whether or not he pushed me in or I fell in. Because I felt a hand on my back. And he said he reached out to grab the, to put his hand on the motor, which if you don't know what this motor was, this engine is the type that runs really hot.
Oh no.
So he wouldn't have reached out and put his hand on it and been fine, he would've reached out, put his hand on it and burned the fuck out of it.
Cause, that's hot. That's it for today, and so ends this episode, thank you all so much for joining us, if you liked this video, leave a like and a comment. And if you wanna see more, hit subscribe and the bell, and we'll see you guys next time.
Later.
Tune in next time for another Flotoman story with Celsius.
Yeah, baby.